I am sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission Meeting, July 19th, 2023.
The first two hours was like, seemed like three minutes.
Okay, calling the meeting to order at July 19th, Regional Planning Commission, and Rod would be lead us in the pledge.
Sure. My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with a public comment. Agenda will be limited to three minutes per person. Commission reserved the right to reduce the time limit and total time allotted for public comment. Comments during the discussion items not to be accepted from the general public. Commission may prohibit comment if the content of the comments are locally disruptive of the meeting by being slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounting to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of other speakers. With that, we will open up for public comment.
Okay. My name's Eric Colada, K-O-L-A-D-A. I will be speaking about the home occupation permit application for Casey Nardi doing business as grooming by Casey. I'm an immediate neighbor to this residence, and I wanted to voice my concerns about this application. Number one, noise. I currently work shift work, and which requires me to sleep during the day, and my bedroom window is approximately 25 feet from the proposed area of this business. I know that dogs often bark in strange situations, and barking dogs at the grooming business may cause other neighborhood dogs to bark also, a chain reaction. One question I have is how will the dogs be held before and after grooming? How will barking be handled? And any associated noise with the business such as dryers? Next is odors and waste disposal. With dog grooming, there's fecal matter, there's hair, and water from grooming. How will those be addressed? Where will the water go? Will it be tied into the existing sewer system? Or will it go into the ground? Is there potential for clogs? How will air be filtered? And will any runoff water affect my yard? Lastly, is that there's potential for increased traffic. Each customer would be a minimum of two trips. And currently, the neighborhood, which is Aspen Heights off of South Industrial, it's a very family-oriented neighborhood, lots of kids play on the street, and what I've seen is that the residents and the media, friends and family are very respectful of traffic laws, but people who visit the neighborhood, I've seen oftentimes speed. Thank you.
More public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, at the previous meeting, I asked for an inclusion of an item for board members' reports. Still not on the agenda. I also asked to include for discussion possible zoning concerns for future agenda items, discussion action. That's not been done yet. I also ask for clarification in regards to, excuse me, I'm talking as a member of the final commission now, has that previous items?
No, it's a public comment. You can't, you can't do that. You can only speak at this time as a member of the public.
Private individual?
Yes, private individual, member of the public, not as a member of the board or representing the board.
Okay. As a private individual, I'm concerned that this board does not address the previous items. And I'm also concerned that there's been no clarification in regards to Carrie Pinter's concern with development and whether required 3.9 acres or 4.1. Need clarification on that. I have a concern on the end grass, egress for Golden Gate Petroleum. I've not seen anything to date regarding that. I requested in the past to inspect state end-up projects in the city of Ely and Wayne County. I've asked other boards and we got no response. On, on the item that I've not received just recently, any notice in regards to action taken for Alicia Johnson, DBA Lux T and D, what's the status? Did we ever get, or did you folks ever get the, sign off on owners, by the owner?
Yes.
Okay, it should have been in the packet. I want to know what the status is in regards to the owner or owners of properties on Russell Cove Avenue and Pinon Road, that safe Russian weeds are overgrown on the sidewalks and need to be removed. The city mayor and the city council need to be notified. The semis are parking along those same streets, a violation of city code restricting overweight vehicles. The violations have been going on for years and getting worse by the day. Those that cater to semis and that kind of traffic need to accommodate them. I was at a meeting where the community choir building across the street on Altman is under renovation, and a member of theirs, Mr. Bill Wilson, stated they now have a second fire escape, which is a new elevator being installed. The elevator is not considered a fire escape, and that may still be lacking ADA compliance. If you go to any elevator, the first thing you notice is the sign that warns you in case of fire, do not use the elevator. Use these other access. Last item I ask, I'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, next, public comments.
Good evening, Craig Deerson. Historic buildings do not require accessible access. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Okay, anyone else, public comment? Okay, we will close public comment, and we'll open up to item A, discussion for possible action. Approval of a county home occupation permit applicant is Casey Nardi, DBA grooming by Casey. Property address is 988 East 75th Street, Ely, Nevada, 89301. Type of business is dog grooming.
I'm Joseph Nardi, and this is Casey Nardi. I'm going to be speaking mostly on her behalf, because she doesn't do well with public speaking. Is that okay with you guys?
Okay.
He also owns the house. He's the only one on the house.
I do. We have 15 letters of support here from two direct neighbors, one neighbor across the street, and the neighborhood, one potential home buyer. And I'm going to turn this over to Jennifer, so she can make copies of this. So.
Does he have been read into the record?
No.
No? Okay.
Just submitted. Just reviewed and submitted.
Okay. Pledges of support.
Okay. Do you have a physical count of how many pledges there are?
There's 15, right?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
How many? 15?
Thanks.
15 letters of support for, for this item, so.
And they'll be submitted into the record in the minutes for this meeting?
Okay. These will be submitted into the, into the records and the minutes on this meeting, so.
And then just share them with the other board members? Kenna, you're not able to see these letters of support. Are you okay with knowing that they're the, in general, they're the neighbors and have filled them out?
Yeah, are they, they're just individual letters? They're not like a petition with 15 signatures, right? They're actual 15 separate letters of recommendation or support?
They're technically generic letters of support.
The answer is yes.
So are you going to type this letter that says the same thing just signed by all those individuals, or they each were a letter?
Let's see.
They're generic.
Generic. They're the same on each one.
It's a pre-formatted letter that the Nardi's prepared and had the neighbors sign.
Can we read just one of them? If they're all the same, just so that we kind of have, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have one, I'll read it in. Okay. Reads thusly. I am pledging my support to Casey Nardi, who resides at 988 75th Street East, to open a grooming shop at her residence under the name of grooming by Casey. I have been informed that they will be using environmentally friendly products and have animals coming to and from the residence. There will be no more than two or three clients a day to keep vehicle traffic to no more than 10 vehicle trips per day or less. The shop will have a French drain into the rock yard that will not affect the environment, the air around the residence, or any other, the other homes in the area. Everything that Casey is doing will be pet-friendly, as well as environmentally friendly. It'll be an added benefit to the neighborhood.
So, a couple questions that I have. Did you look into renting any commercial space first, or you specifically want to try to do this in your home?
We actually looked into renting commercial space, and with her clientele, she doesn't have enough clientele to make it viable to actually rent commercial space. She wouldn't, she'd be in the red every month.
Gotcha, okay. I just, I have a rental that's right next to Wild West grooming, and I know that, you know, I've been renting that for 15 years now, and it, it doesn't seem to be a problem with, for my renters that are there, both with traffic and noise, you know? If any of them have pets, it definitely gets the whole barking dog chain going, so, I mean, for the neighborhood's protection, I guess, I would be concerned about that. Yeah, those are my concerns.
So, one thing that we are proposing, and we've thought about this a lot, because we've had friends come over, play dates with our dogs, things like that, is a cageless, grooming style. It's a lot less stress on a dog, where, say, you wanted to schedule your dog to come in. Your dog shows up, and you're the first one there, your dog goes straight to grooming. Another dog shows up, it's pet-friendly, it gets to meet other dogs to play with and play in the yard. But if we were to do what all these other grooming places do in town, just kennel dogs all day long, that's where the high-stress environment comes from in these dogs. It affects them, and it really changes their personality when they go home at the end of that day.
Another thing, too, is the dog daycare Wild West provides is another reason they have a lot of waste. And I don't want.
I'm sorry?
Doggy daycare that Wild West provides is another problem for barking, which we don't, I don't provide.
We will not be doing doggy daycare.
That is not, that's a whole nother beast, which is also a noise issue, is dog daycare.
Our whole goal for the neighborhood is, we don't want to bother the Coladas, we don't want to bother anybody. We want to be able to keep our neighborhood basically the exact same as it has been for the last, oh, I've been there since 2012, so 11 years for me. We want, we don't want anything to change, other than just a couple vehicles coming down the street.
So what happens if your business increases, then you, you know, triple your, your business?
We turn people away.
You, you don't intend on continuing to, to run your business out of the home?
So eventually, she has a long-term goal. Her long-term goal, if this business succeeds in the home, is to save all this money from the home business. Then it's to buy a piece of land, where she could actually expand, put a big business on, and expand into other things, where she could expand with horses and, what else were you going to do?
Then I was going to look at the doggy daycare.
Oh, yeah. Then she was going to do the doggy daycare and possibly do that, but that would be located away from people down the road, at which she can save some money up from an initial startup of the business.
I'm not a dog person, but how often does a dog need grooming?
Well, it depends. If it's a dog that actually has hair that needs cut or shaved, then it would be six to eight weeks. If it's a dog that needs a bath and blow out, depending on the type of dog that sheds, then that would be every four to 12 weeks.
Just out of curiosity, what does it take to, to be a dog groomer? Is there a certification or something that you have to do, some sort of education?
In the state of Nevada, no. It is, technically, it would be a good idea if you do, you know, go get your certification as far as first aid, CPR, things like that for pets, but you do not have to go to college. It is not required in the state of Nevada for dog grooming.
Would you like to tell them your experience? How many years' experience do you have?
2014, nine years? I have nine years' experience. Have to do this.
Working for the pet program now?
Yes, and then working on my own, Big Colorado for Petco, and then coming back and working under a couple other programmers, and then coming back as my own.
What, what point should be done to alleviate the gentleman's question that did public comment earlier?
Okay. So, I talked to him yesterday, and he and him sat down, had a conversation. I am actually willing to tie that into the main drainage if the French drain doesn't work out for him. And we are enclosing everything with plywood, and we're going to try and soundproof it as best as we can. If it is still an issue, we will fix it. I already gave him that promise. Anything that is an issue, we will change it, we will fix it. Because the noise, I sleep at the daytime. I work at the mine, I'm on rotational shifts, just like he is. So, when she has groomed her mom's dogs at the house, when she was between dogs, nobody even knew that. She'd do it when I was working. I'd come home after a night shift, sleep, didn't bother me. And she was just doing that for a favor for her mom.
No overnight kennel like or anything like that?
No. No. As soon as they're done, they go home.
May I interrupt you?
Go ahead.
Eric, was there any other concerns that I can address really quick for you?
Yeah, you, am I allowed to talk, or how does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, so far, I've been, I've been taking notes. You know, one of the things after Kenna asked about the noise in the business and her tenants having issues with Wild West, you mentioned cageless grooming and the dogs.
Yes.
Are able to play in the yard.
Play away from your, oh, I guess they can ignore that part that we talked about.
So, I mean, there, there's still always the potential, you know, even though it's, you mentioned that it's, it's going to be potentially less stress.
Yes.
But there still is a potential for barking or loud playing or something like that. How would you handle that when, when that happens?
Okay.
Like immediate action?
It would be an immediate action.
Separate, put them in the building and kennel them.
Yep. It has to be a training for the dogs, that they know that's a good behavior or it's a bad behavior. It's just like when you're training your own personal dogs, you immediately stop it, fix it, correct it, and try again later.
Okay. You mentioned soundproofing the shop?
Yeah.
Is all grooming activity going to happen within that building?
As far as the dryers go, yes.
Okay.
So, and the dryers aren't too loud. I usually keep them on low, because high will burn the engines up.
Okay.
But they're more, they're not as loud. They're, they're about the same as a dog park.
Okay.
So.
As far as water drainage, have you consulted a hydrologist or a, you know, someone who deals with water?
I can't quite deal with the, you know.
You want to come up and share the mic, Eric?
Yeah. In regards to the, the water runoff, have you consulted an expert such as a hydrologist or someone else who, who's an expert in, in water drainage and?
That's a good question.
Sewer versus a French drain?
We have not consulted a hydrologist, but if it would make you feel better about the French drain, we will consult. But, the French drain, the biodegradable things about the dog shampoo and it being pet-friendly, it has to go into soil. If we send it to the sewage system, it's just going to get tied up in all that waste and, yeah, recycled in all the wastewater and it's not going to go back to the environment. We're throwing it all away again. That's the whole purpose of the French drain system with all the biodegradable things that she wants to use. She wants to make it pro-environment, pro-giving-back, and we don't want to affect you guys, anyone else. That's why I said, any issues between you, any of the neighbors that have already signed and said, "We pledge the support," if they change their mind down the road and say, "Hey, this is bugging us," we will fix it. That is our promise, because it is a business.
Are any of those 15 people happen to be in the audience?
No, we had one here, but she had to go home due to circumstances.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to make public comment or ask a question?
No.
Okay.
No.
Rod?
I'm convinced they know what they're getting in for, and if there's a need for it, I think these are the folks that can take care of it. So, I'm in favor of approving that.
George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These folks here are doing more than others that have come before this board for the same type of situation, and they appear to be more than willing to address any infractions. In the case of Wild West grooming, if there's an infraction or a concern about barking dogs, I've been, a lot of meetings, I've never heard that there is. If there is, those that are affected need to come forward and place any concerns before this board. Other than that, I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Well, and I.
Yeah, Kenna?
I want to say more things before we go to vote. Kenna, I do think it's a great service. I just don't see it in a residential neighborhood, and my concern would be, the intentions are great that you're doing with animals, but I'm a dog lover, so, you know, that's coming from, from somebody that would like to see this happen, but, but I think I would be concerned about it still being in the residential neighborhood. You know, how is that going to be enforced if some of those things do come about that are a problem?
All those concerns come before the board, and you have others in residential areas that have done it in the past, and I believe you have some now. I've not heard of one other complaint.
We have 15 neighbors who are in full support of what they're doing, so.
And I give, I give Eric my word. He's my direct neighbor. If I walk out my door and look to the right, I can see his sheriff's pickup sitting there. My word is golden. If I can't fix it, we'll stop doing it, because.
Or we'll find somebody who can.
Yep. We don't want to affect our neighborhood. We want to keep it positive. We want to give back to the neighborhood. Eventually, eventually, she wants to start a 50/50 fund where she could build a dog park off of it somewhere, whether it's out in our neighborhood when they do that expansion someday, or whether it's in the city, but she wants to start a 50/50 for a dog park, too.
Okay. Yes, Eric, can I ask a couple more questions?
Sure.
Stay over there.
Okay.
How will, how will fecal matter and hair be stored and disposed of to minimize any odor? And with the hair, how, how will it be filtered?
So, fecal matter will be picked up daily.
Sealed trash can, taken to the dump once a week.
And if it becomes a more frequent ordeal, where she's picking up business and it's not manageable to us, as in, we smell it, we know you're going to smell it, we'll start picking it up twice a week, three times a week.
Taken it to the dump twice, three times a week.
As in, yeah, taken it to the dump two, three times a week. Because we are not going to affect you guys. We do not want to affect you guys.
And hair will be disposed of as the same way? It will be cleaned up and it will be put in a sealed bag?
Is there a special, like, drain filter type thing?
So, you just put basically a strainer and catch all the hair. It's the same thing, but in a dog bath, they have special catches, don't they?
Yeah, they have special hair traps.
That are long and catch a lot more hair than what ours.
So before it even hits the outside, it's already in the hair trap?
Okay. I think the last question I have at this point is, the letters of support, are they immediate neighbors, neighbors down the street, or customers?
We have Sue, who is off to our left. We have Jared, who is across from us.
The gentleman behind us.
We have Javier, who's behind us. Those are all three direct neighbors. The rest, I would consider the neighborhood, because all those three houses are connected.
Okay.
The rest are just around the neighborhood.
Based on that, anybody else have any questions or comments from the audience?
Point of order, counselor, there's a motion on the floor.
Pardon me?
There's a motion on the floor.
Right, but more time was allotted for a member of the public to come back up. So, in regards to fairness to the public, they're allowed the equal time.
Okay, no, no other public comment? Okay, in that case, then we will put it to, do I hear a motion?
You have my motion.
We motioned all seconded.
Okay, George moves to accept, and Rod seconds?
George made the motion, and Rod?
Yeah, seconded.
Yeah.
I thought I made a motion to start with, but it wasn't a motion. I thought I made a motion to start with, but it wasn't a motion, I guess.
Did I get it backwards? George, did you make, did you make the motion?
I made the motion, seconded time.
Okay.
The first time and the second time.
Okay, and now Rod has seconded the motion. George has redundantly moved to accept it and Rod has redundantly seconded it. So all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, it passed. She was an aye. Yeah, Kenna?
Yeah.
Was, Kenna, that was an aye in, in support of passing the motion?
Yeah, seems like it has more support than it has argument to get it, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Very good, thank you, Kenna.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for being so thorough.
You're welcome.
We try.
We will move on to item B. Discussion for possible action, approval of a city home occupation permit. Applicant is Scott Lee, DBA Clean Green Contracting. Address is 2351 Captain Street, Ely, Nevada, 89301. Type of business is landscape contracting.
Hello, thank for your time, thank you for your, for your consideration. Um, if I'll, if I can just briefly explain, I've been a contractor in Nevada for 15 years. I've recently moved to Ely and I love it here. And it's come to my attention that I need to have local business licenses, which is fine. So as it is a whole-based business, I wanted to clarify that there'll be no additional traffic. All work that I've discussed with entities or people here in Ely has been consultation and planned pre-assembly. There's gonna be no consideration for equipment storage, lay-down yard, any additional trailers. I have a trailer in my front yard that has a lot of amount of equipment and there'll be, there'll be no changes, right? There's not gonna be foot traffic, there's not gonna be equipment laid out. It's just gonna be on my computer clicking away, making plans.
Okay, and I see we do have a letter from your landlord saying.
Yes.
From Juan Castro.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's fine with it. We actually have had pleasant discussions about his landscaping as well, so he's, he's fine with it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, George moves to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'm pregnant.
Okay, Kenna seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Passed.
Yay. Good day.
Okay, we shall move on to public hearing and discussions and decisions. Uh, public hearing for the consideration of a proposed application for a variance on property located in Ely, Nevada. The applicant is Janelle Wheeler. She is requesting to construct 26 foot 4 inch by 6 foot 7 inch front porch onto her home, which would not meet the setback requirements specified in chapter 12 dash C, 4C dash 3 of the Ely City Code. Ordances 410 and 626. Subject property address and or general location is 949 Avenue H and APN number 002-093-06.
So I really didn't know I was gonna have to get up and talk. Andre Paez. So this winter, the snow ripped our, our eve off in front of the house. I went to the city hall to see what I had to do and I wasn't quite understanding. I didn't know that we would have to go through all of this, so it's been a learning experience. I'm just trying to improve the front of my house.
I'm totally in favor of it.
Okay.
The shoulders are in charge.
We're, we're not in, we're not in public, we're in public hearing right now. We're not in discussion for possible action yet.
All right.
All right. So any other public input? Okay, I will close public input and open it for discussion for possible action. Approval of a proposed application for variance of property located in Ely, Nevada. Applicant is Janelle Wheeler. She is requesting to construct 26 foot 4 inch by 6 foot 7 inch front porch onto her home, which would not meet the setback requirements regarding chapter 12 dash 4C dash 3 of the Ely City Code. Ordances 410 and 626. Subject property address and or general location is 949 Avenue H and APN number 002-093-06. So we open that up for discussion. I drove by there and I noticed that you have sidewalk fronting the whole area. How, how far does that come out?
Uh, it's 6 foot. Actually, it's 6 foot 4 inches.
So pretty much what we're looking at for the front porch is the dimension of that side of that, of that concrete deck out in front.
Yes.
I'm curious to know why that restriction was even there.
Perhaps it's too far forward.
I think, yeah, I think these were built before the ordinances came in.
So I'm not quite sure when that house was set there. I just recently found out that it came from Ruth.
It was built in 1909.
It was built in 1909. So this is all a learning experience for us, so I'm not sure.
Will you have a cover over this porch?
Uh, it's gonna be four pillars in the front with a matching copper roof is my goal.
So it'll be open?
It will.
Open, but it'll have a cover?
Yes.
Okay.
I had Kevin from Bath Lumber draw up all the weight ratings and the drawing for me.
Okay.
That property's on the corner, is it not?
Yes.
I drove by there, I don't have a problem. Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from George. Uh, do I hear a second?
All second.
Do we have a second from Rod? Kenna? All those in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, it passes.
All right, thank you, guys.
You bet.
So I have one question before, before I start even building, I have to go get the permit, correct? So I will, I will come see you Monday. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Okay. We will close the public hearings and decisions and we open to discussion for possible action. Approval of minutes from the original planning permission meeting held June 21, 2023. And I took a look through it, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me.
I didn't either. Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I was not out that meeting, can I just go second that?
Okay.
I'm, I didn't hear what you said.
He's a motion to approve and Kenna seconds the approval of the minutes. Did, did you notice anything?
Nope, I didn't.
Okay. Oh, then we had a motion to approve from George and, and a second from Kenna. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay, the minutes passes and we'll reopen to public comment.
Okay, let's come on. Eric Colada, again, KOL ADA, speaking in regards to the dog grooming home occupation business. I appreciate the committee members, commissioners, review of this application. Although I still have very much concerns of having a dog grooming business next to my residence. One thing I didn't mention, and I won't say who, but I am, my occupation is sensitive in nature. And having, I have a vehicle in front of my house that identifies who I work for and what I do. I will not say what that is. But in that neighborhood where I live, the only people that travel in that neighborhood are residents and immediate family members and, and friends of those residents. So I very much moved to that neighborhood to, because of the minimal traffic and, you know, I think that having the dog grooming business just, it's the internet age. People can find out stuff about anyone they want to, but I try to minimize it the best as possible. So living out there and not having a whole lot of traffic is, sure is nice for what I do.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on July 6, 2023, I asked the Ely City Council, speaking as a private personnel, uh, what they were going to do with the dangerous dilapidated awning, uh, which is, has started before at 701 East Dalton. No answer yet. We need to look at that or you need to look at that. I also asked at that same time, July 6, 2023, what the city council was gonna do to address the encroachment of city clerk Jennifer Lee's fence on the city sidewalk right away, which impedes ADA access. I've not received an answer yet. I've also asked in the past in regards to the planning commission, the city, at your meetings as well as the city, to date does not address the city code violations by previous and present members of the planning commission, as well as some of the city councilmen and county commission. Again, they need to comply with codes that they have formulated and adopted or resigned. On 295 Ely Avenue, we have a fence above code. You have that individual who's blocking public accessway. If they're gonna do construction, there are methods of routing traffic around that. Permit is taken out and you can proceed. To date, nothing has transpired. I gave several incentives in the past, no action to date. I've got concern in regards to Golden Gate ingress address, I've not received an answer on that. We need to address that before they put in a final plan. Those semis cannot go on the city streets, city code. I, uh, I've asked for permits to park RVs on my properties here at Keith Carson on Carson Avenue. RVs coming to go. You folks have not approved any permits and I put in an application and I've not gotten anything yet. On the trailer park on Carson Avenue, you got an RV coming in there, not saying that he can't be there once he has a permit. I've asked for a permit for years, for years, not gotten anything. Discrimination needs to stop. Mr. Chairman, I've got a major concern regarding the drainage coming down from the Bath property at Seventh Street on the old school. The drainage is eroding my property. City code does not allow one to drain onto another person's property. I've been bringing that up for months and I've not received any.
Time's up, thank you.
Resolution. We need to address that.
Time's up, thank you, George. Okay, any further public comment? To close those, public comment, then we'll move on to the last item. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
George moves to adjourn, do I hear a second? Rod, seconds. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there Kenna?
Hey, good, thank you.
Okay.
Did you hear the motion?
Did you hear the motion?
Yes.
Kenna did? Yes.
Yes, I heard the motion and I said aye.
Okay. All opposed? No, none in opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you, Kenna.
This has been a Georgetown production, George Chatchis reporting.